Sharing that information with you is not a problem. What I would encourage you to do is do the same. Don't, I mean mine, I've got a little more experience than, well, everyone else here, only because I'm a little older. Only because I'm a little older. But, you know, it's more to being here. Mr. Johnson, we asked him how much money we have available. We need to be letting him know how much money we're trying to bring in so we can do the different things that we need. And then we won't be robbing Peter to pay Paul and Peter's book. We need to be thinking like that. So I don't have a problem giving anybody any questions or information on what I'm doing, but for those of us up here, we all need to be doing it. I don't want you to just watch me. I want you to learn from what I'm doing and you can duplicate the same stuff.
Teach us.
That's why, you're getting the information. You're not asking how. You want a copy of it? No problem. Yes, sir.
I know you're about to go to item four, but it looks like they're ready for the presentation for three.
No, I've got it. I've got it.
I also want to, Mr. Mayor, thank you, say thank you to the citizens. The trip that the mayor took to Guatchene was powerful. We've had this partnership with Guatchene for some years.
Since.
The city of Guatchene have came to the city of Prairie before, again, piggybacking off of work that myself and the former mayor, Jackson, have done already. And I think it's important that we continue sister-city connections to solidify the work not only in this diaspora, but in diasporas and continents afar. This is important specifically in that country. So again, Mr. Mayor, thank you for continuing the work.
No problem. The mayor over there, like myself, came in after that and we're glad to do everything we can. And now we're actually getting some stuff done. Item four, discuss, consider, and take action Panther Hill Apartments Complex with Bureau Veritas, City Engineer David Line Decker, and developer Panther Hill's apartment complex. Counselor Monroe.
Mr. Mayor, I think we all agree to put this on the agenda so we could have a conversation. So I first would like to give this opportunity to our, the councilman who represented City Council at the emergency meeting in reference to water pressure and some of the things that were happening. So, Mr. Counselor Randall.
Thank you. As Counselor Monroe said, in the previous city council meeting, we were presented with the dilemma about the water pressure over in Brookside Apartments. There was concern that the water pressure wasn't sufficient in case of emergency for the fire department. And so what happened is we called an emergency meeting with myself, the mayor, City Engineer David Line Decker, Bureau Veritas, USW, who does, who's in charge of our water, and Assistant Fire Chief Bordeaux. And we started off in here, you know, kind of looking at the map of, you know, where the water lines are throughout the city and trying, basically trying to analyze what the problem was. And Mr. Line Decker, he arrived, he quickly said, "Well, oh, there must be a valve shut or clogged somewhere." And so we kind of continued the conversation, but he was really adamant that there must be a valve shut off or clogged somewhere. So we all packed up in our vehicles and we went out to the, to Brookside Apartments. We released the fire hydrant. We saw, you know, some water pressure issues. And so then we sent USW and Mr. Glover to different locations. And he sent Mr. Glover to a specific location to check a valve. It turned out the valve had been shut off. We don't know how long the valve was shut off, but once the valve was shut back on, the water pressure increased substantially. But at the same time, we didn't have the tool to measure the exact numbers of water pressure. So it was basically an eyeball test. And so, so we left the last city council meeting, you know, trying to figure out what our next steps were going to be as far as the city's standpoint and where we stood as far as the city. But we were supposed to go back out. We're supposed to get Chief Bordeaux the measuring tools so he could go back in. And so we actually have numbers to figure out what the actual numbers are as far as the water pressure once we release both water, water of fire hydrants. So Chief Bordeaux, did we ever go back and perform that test?
Yes, we did.
Do you have the results?
Yes. Mayor, City Council members of the audience, we did that test last week, me, Public Works, Mr. Glover, and USW. Once we got the equipment from this Dicky.
Great Aunt Laine Chopper.
And I want to thank you for that. We went out there on Riches Road. We started over on 290 over there near Wise Chapel. We had a static pressure of roughly 70 PSI, which is equal to what the lift station is pushing out. Then we opened up another hydrant to flow it. It dropped down to roughly 65 PSI. Pumps kicked in, bumped it right back up to 70 PSI. So on that Wise Chapel in 290, across from 290, adequate and strong water pressure. So then we went over to Brookside Apartments and we did the same test. We did a static reading on that same hydrant that we had been testing before. And we had roughly 60 PSI. And from the distance from Wise Chapel all the way over there, we realized adequate pressure. You're going to have a friction loss because you're talking about a pipe size.
I was just going to touch on that, just so citizens are aware. There's a, from Wise Chapel to where Brookside Apartments are, the pipes increase in size, correct?
They increase.
They increase in size.
Six to 12.
So that also affects.
Right. So you're going to have, you're going to have that, the loss pertaining to the pressure, but it's still adequate.
Right.
You know, we're talking about 60 PSI.
Right.
Then Mr. Glover, he went to one hydrant, which is right there at the Chevron Station at the end of 290 and Riches Road. And he opened up the two and a half. It went from 60 PSI down to roughly, I believe it was 58, probably 55 and more. And pumps kicked right in, bumped right up. So I just wanted to get like a general idea because if we use our trucks to hook up to the hydrant, we're going to go with the five-inch steamer. So I told Mr. Glover if he could just go back to Chevron Station and open up the five-inch steamer. He did that and it went down from 60 down to, I think it was like 30. Pumps kicked in, right back. So the pressure for Brookside, as far as firefighting purposes concerned, is adequate. More than adequate.
And that was confirmed by the?
City engineer.
That is correct.
David Line Decker. That is correct. And Mayor, I do have your letter for the final report. I'm just letting Chief Jackson review it before I submit it to you. And that will be it. That will be final.
No problem.
So, so when we were, when we were out there, just point of knowledge, you know, in the last meeting, we were given this, this plan of action supposed to address the water pressure whatever. And just, you know, in my conversation with Mr. Line Decker and, you know, other people, as far as Panther Hill Apartments goes, the city, the city's water pressure is sufficient to provide the service that we need to, which is, which all the cities require to, is run a line from the fire hydrant to across the street.
No.
No. All the, right. No, all the city is required.
We're responsible for having the water pressure to sustain.
That is correct.
The line from, from the fire hydrant to across the street.
Correct.
But it wouldn't be a bad idea for the developer to implement that, 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 that plan of action that they submitted to us for, you know, so they can sustain their own.
The pressurized system.
Right.
Within their facility.
That is correct.
And they've already ordered that.
Okay, so they already ordered that, meaning who's, on their particular property, they're going to order a pressurized system that will boost their pressure?
Yeah.
Who's going to, how, walk us through that process, Mr. Mayor?
Well, they're having that installed by, I forget, Superior Water?
Superior.
Superior Sprinkler Company?
Yes, sir.
They're having their, that's been ordered to take care of their situation. The water pressure pump's being put on their property. And it's a requirement that when they have their sprinkler system tested, it goes up to the third floor. So that's the process.
One of the questions I had, I guess, in this particular, again, this was put on the agenda, I think many of us wanted to, because at the last meeting, it was an emergency in reference to Brookside. And we wanted to make sure, as many of you know, Brookside is across the street from Panther Hill. And so this was asked to be put on the agenda. It's on here. Is David Line Decker, Bureau Veritas, or anyone from Panther Hill here?
No. Bureau Veritas said they could be at the next meeting. David Line Decker, the engineer, Mr. Dicky, we just got this resignation thing today. His contract was up, I guess they're saying, because of his busy schedule. And he has, he hasn't been here because he's got another city council that takes place on Monday. And he's been doing that Monday one long before. So when, I guess, the council went from Tuesday to Monday, his commitment stayed over there and he just feels like they can't service us. I just saw the letter just shortly prior to the meeting, but we'll give the council a copy of it for us.
One of, the concern that I've heard from many citizens on this project, to be frank, the concerns heightened once we were going to have an emergency meeting and we were asked to contemplate whether we're going to have to spend six figures to be able to fix a situation that would have been exacerbated by this Panther Hill development. And so one of the questions, I think, council voiced a concern to you about the engineer, about Bureau Veritas, and where we are currently in our process. Meaning from the application piece to signing off on the particular projects, who can give us an up-to-date where we at? Who has signed off on what? So our citizens in the community can feel like this, this development is a, is a development that's going to not only bring economic impact that we all want, but does not admit, does not put us at a liability or some other issues that we may have to resolve at a later date. And so is there, if we don't have the people here, is this something we need to move to our next meeting? But also, you know, just the information on like, so we did a flow test. The reason why we found out about the low, low water pressure was the, the developers' people was trying to figure out what was the pressure for their meter, their sprinkler heads. Now, the question that I had is why were they testing the water meter across the street?
Okay, let me answer that.
Now, there's a second part and then you can answer it.
Okay.
If I'm a developer and I'm building this many units, I should have installed several fire hydrants on my particular part of the property, not using the fire hydrants that are across the street. And so in the plans they said, you referred, you said that they're going to have their own fire hydrants, their own everything. That's what they should have been water testing their fire hydrants, because fire hydrant's going at the beginning of the process, not at the end. And so those are the concerns that citizens have communicated to me. And so I wanted to find out specifically with all these water issues we had across the street at Brooks, at Brookside, that we have resolved these issues or we have solutions to future potential problems.
Yes. First off, if you've ever built or been familiar with building anything, you don't put fire hydrants, you just don't put fire hydrants in when you're building up the buildings. The water was tested across the street because our main line runs across the street. If you go in any street in the city, the line is either on one side or the other. Never both. The water sewer has to be some nine feet apart from each other, but you test the water that's there. You don't wait, and that's a part of the building process, I'm checking. If they hadn't tested that and we hadn't, because the city, for all these years, and you know, you know, you've been on the council for eight years, the city hadn't been testing the water hydrant pressure. So now we know, and the city bought the equipment, I had Mr. Dicky order it, and now Chief has the equipment and we're working on a program to test the fire hydrants throughout the city, because this is not the first one that's come up that has been a problem. But as I just shared with you earlier, they're buying what they need. That's not a city issue or problem, because Bureau Veritas, as our inspectors, they test this stuff before it's allowed to open. So the fire sprinkler pressure, Chief Bordeaux's in on some of those fire pressure tests with sprinklers and all that stuff. So the stuff gets tested, but it gets tested at the end on the project, because it's sort of like, you know, you're driving a car and you don't have an axle, so you can't put wheels on it. You got a car, but until you put the axle, you can't put the tires. It's a building process. But they have to test the lines that were there. And initially, when Chief Bordeaux and I and others were out there, that water pressure went extremely low, like down to zero. So now we know through Mr. Glover's testing, the engineer's suggestions, because I was out there with them and we were doing this stuff early Monday morning, when Chief Bordeaux had the equipment. If this hadn't come up and we had an issue at Brookside, and it turns out the valve was still off from previous work that our folks had done, we wouldn't know, and that is not the time to be checking valves. So in some respects, we can be thankful, number one, that it wasn't a problem, but number two, we found out about it before it created a problem. If that issue had not been being constructed across the street, those valves would never have been found closed and the fire pressure, when the chief and them went to get it, went to zero. I was there.
The valve, is the valve, so I want to get some clarification.
Yeah.
The valve that we're talking about was a Public Works valve, is that correct?
All the valves in the city belong to us.
Right. So do you have a process that you sign off for Public Works on how the city now, since we found this error, on how we're going to maintain our, make sure that we're checking? Or is that what we've talked about, we're going to do with working through with the fire department? How we're going to set up? So next, so for further, who's going to make sure that we check the valves? And a second question, how many, so when someone does pre-development?
Let me, let me answer one question at a time, so we won't be, I want to know what you asked the first time. Chief and I, and he mentioned a reference, the document to you, as I stated, this had not been covered. So now it's getting covered. So let's be thankful on some sense, because our residents are counting on us. And Glover and the guys have checked valves. It was an honest error because they had to cut the valve off to do the work and they forgot to cut it back on. But that fortunately was all that it was. It was caught prior to an emergency. And there's some thankfulness in there. Chief Bordeaux and I are working on an independent relationship. I talked to Chief Jackson. This is something that Chief Bordeaux has licenses on. And we're going to be looking to contract with our assistant chief on his separate licensing, not having to do with the Prairie Volunteer Fire Department, to do this work for us that has never been being checked in the city. So we're moving forward. And what's your next question?
My next question has to do with the agenda item. With Panther Hill, the question, I guess we should be able to know, and since you're your quarterback in the project for Panther Hill, how many fire hydrants does Panther Hill have? We should currently, we should currently have a document. You should have that document now on how many fire hydrants Panther Hill is going to have.
That document has been reviewed by Bureau Veritas. The fire, Mr. Herschel?
Correct.
And he's the fire inspector with Chief Bureau Veritas?
Herschel, yes.
Yeah, we met with him. He was out there on our May 3 meeting. He was out at his subsequent meeting when we tested.
Yes, sir.
So these things are being done. Chief Bordeaux has looked at them. Bureau Veritas has sent them, looked at them, and approved them. And they've approved the first two buildings. So these things are happening. We, well, let me, let me make sure you understand the process, because I think that's where we're having a miscommunication. When someone comes in with some plans, we assess with them the value of the plans. They are charged a fee based on Bureau Veritas, who you and the former council brought in, I don't know, four or five years ago. So we're using the same people you've been using. The process hasn't changed, but let me tell you what it is, since some people understand and we don't know. We get two sets of plans. The people pay their fee. The fee is essentially Bureau Veritas inspection fee. So when someone pays a permit fee, they're paying for our certified licensed big outfit inspectors to do the inspection, because we don't have people here qualified to do that. So that's what Bureau Veritas does. So the safety, if you're concerned about the safety, is we have experts reviewing it as a part of the process that you were involved bringing in. So we get them a set of plans, we get the city engineer a set of plans, and both of them sign off on it. We work back and forth. And again, when you talk of any size construction, you know, if there's this that needs to change, if you need nails over here, that takes place. But Bureau Veritas has approved the plans and so far they've approved the first two buildings that are ready. Counselor Randall.
I just want to just touch on a quick point. I think there's a little, a little cloudiness about with the issue. We, we hired Bureau Veritas, I guess about three years ago, maybe four years ago, but I think, like Counselor Monroe, he's asking valid questions, but I think he's, these are the same questions he started asking when the project was first presented. And so I think the issue is, you know, not whether the, whether it's being done, but whether, if you would say.
No, don't, don't, don't take that rubband off, please. Just kidding. No, it's about 20 pounds. These are, these are the city set, it's a city copy, of the plans that were submitted for that $15 million, $20 million project. Mr. Leverett, unless you want to be removed, please. The city sends them to Bureau Veritas. Their technical people, and each of these pages covers different technical aspects of the project. Am I right, Chief?
That's correct.
So one of them has to do with the fire hydrants and things like that. I know Chief has seen them. I think maybe there's some misconception that I'm the one reviewing these plans, and that's not the place. I don't have the expertise and I don't care to. We send it to the people who we pay the permit fee to. Here's Bureau Veritas's stamp of approval. One set went to the city engineer and you received his letter with whatever recommendations a couple of weeks ago. So yes, they're valid questions, but they're the same questions I've been asked for the last three or four months. At some point, either read it, understand the process, or I don't know what else to tell you. You're concerned about water hydrants. Chief, you state, hold on. You shared with us maybe three meetings ago that some of the stuff that you inspect is after it's built.
That is correct.
So the fire hydrants aren't there. Our own Assistant Fire Chief with his certifications can't inspect them, but he's going to. The place is not going to open until it passes that stuff and everything else. If the water pressure sprinkler test don't pass, they can't open. But that was no different than any other project. For some reason, this particular project that you keep referencing, I'm championing, I'm not building anything. These folks are investing in our city. And at some point, we need to take a look at the safety as being handled by the professionals who do that. And respect and appreciate the fact that folks are finally investing in our city. I mean, bring somebody who invests in the city and help generate money so we can give our 65 and over folks the deduction for their property taxes that they deserve that every other city gets. You start, go ahead.
So what I was, what I was trying to, what I was trying to get out and communicate is that we're not questioning whether it's being done or not. But I think Counselor Monroe and probably the rest of the council is saying is, if these things were communicated to us prior to city council meeting, you wouldn't have to ask them. And, because what's happening is, when we're out doing what we do in the community, people are asking us questions. And if we don't have the answers, we don't know who to go to for the answers. And so I think that's where Counselor Monroe's question is coming from. If you're saying, hey, Bureau Veritas approved this, all we want to know is, all we want is information so we can do what we were elected to do, just like you are. You know what I mean? So I think a lot of the conversation could be, could be alleviated if information was given out prior to city council meeting. And the truth be told, we haven't asked for this for six months and this, we haven't achieved. And so, I mean, all we need is a little information saying, hey, this was done, this was done. So we can know where the process is. This is a, this is a huge development. It's not like they're building a, you know, leaning to around the corner, is it?
I agree.
So, you know, we have a responsibility to be sure, while we have to be sure our students are taken, we have to make sure that the quality of living for our citizens is affected as well. The only way we can do that is by being provided information.
And I would like for us, as you say, well, number one, counselor, when we send out an email and you say, "Do not reply to all," would you tell the public why that is, based on the Texas Open Meetings Act?
If you have a violation.
Hold, hold on. Listen, let, hold, I know, but you just said, communicate, hold on, Counselor Randall, I didn't interrupt you. Just be respectful. What I'm saying is, you said to communicate this stuff before council meeting. The Texas state laws say you don't do that except in council meeting.
You can't send.
So you can't, hold on. What, Counselor?
You can send information, you just can't respond.
Wait a minute. Hold on. Wait a minute. If one of you did one thing to bring business to the city, it would be nice. But hold on, hold on. What, because you are being disrespectful. What you don't understand is, with the 20 hats that I'm wearing, you want me to take the time to send you an email? When you wanted to know about the water last Monday, you came out there. Your peers did not. That's the only reason you know about that. All of this stuff has been taking place. This, the only thing that's different today is you're seeing the plans, they've been on city hall counter, and you got a key to the building and the alarm, and you haven't bothered. If you're going to get involved, get involved. I have no problem with that. But if all you do is the same thing at every council meeting on the same project, there's no progress in that. You want information? I'm not telling you anything different, except Bureau Veritas a week ago approved two buildings, and I've been out of the country since I found that out on Tuesday. So what, what, what is it you want me to tell you? Yes, sir?
Mayor, I want to thank you for all that you do for the city, for the 20 hats, and as well as for the past week, giving us a update on the emails and what's been going on. But Chief, when, I guess not that, Chief, when someone submits a plan, and that plan, I don't know, I haven't had much construction work, it's not major, things of that sort. So I'm asking for clarity. When, when someone puts their plan together, within their plan, do they have to say how many fire hydrants that they're going to have, the spot in which they're going to have them at, things of that sort?
Based upon the square footage of their.
Based upon the square footage of that facility, yes.
All right, so based upon this, Mayor did state that you looked at the plan. Do you know how many fire hydrants that they have, uh, said that they were gonna put in what places?
It's roughly, uh, eight, eight hydrants. But as far as the exact location, I don't know.
So that's, that don't have to be provided within, is that when?
They have to provide it, uh, they do a calculation, and it should be somewhere like, uh, three hundred to five hundred feet apart from each other. And it should be somewhere like, starting from the main source, which would be the city water supply.
So?
Hold on, I'm sorry. It would be, it would be basically, starting from the main water source, and, and I'm only going in, in regards to the International Fire Code, uh, from the main water source into the facility to your first fire hydrant, that should be roughly about two to three hundred feet. And then, um, every fire hydrant after that should be somewhere around three to five hundred feet.
All right, so, I'm just saying this, I don't know, I'm just using my context clues. When I build a building, I can't just build a building. I'd have to also put like something in the ground or stakehold to say, I want to put a fire hydrant here, based upon how many feet it's from the other one, the thing that's right from.
If you're talking about fire protection, yes, sir.
So if, you, oh, that's in it, so?
That's what Bureau Veritas checks.
That, that's exactly what they do.
All right, so within our process, because on the sheet of paper in which, uh, it gets sent to, sent to us, when we ask, uh, for information, that's sometimes not provided, so maybe you do need a little bit of assistance. But when, when we ask, it shows the city engineer, uh, signature, things upon that. You, you can move forward through a project without getting both signatures, but I'm asking you.
Yes, you can, because that's not Chief's responsibility.
I don't know.
Chief doesn't make that decision. He doesn't make that responsibility, he doesn't have that responsibility.
Your responsibility is also to provide us with information, which, uh, you see, through that, you, so I would ask you now.
You asked about it moving forward? Yes. In answer to your question, this process, what gives you, what, so I guess that's where we have the confusion. You're saying you can still move forward. I think we're all, we want the project to move forward and we respect the project and we respect the work that you've done, Mr. Mayor. But Bureau Veritas, we all can read, signature says at the end of April. For the last six months, we've been talking about this project, which means Bureau Veritas didn't sign off on this project till the end of April. Which means the, the other four months that it's taken, that you've been able to sidestep our questions, again, we have the same concerns. Last meeting, we just had a city council meeting, where you presented to us an emergency workshop to spend two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars on a problem because a valve was closed. And so all we're trying to do is make sure that we're all on the same page in reference to this, this is, in reference to this conversation. This is not a thing against the mayor. This is that I thought we had an understanding when we left this meeting, last meeting. We asked for representation, Councilman Randall was on the committee. He's brought us back that information. But we asked that we be updated from point one to point, whatever point we're at current.